Thanks for being patient with us. We had a very long work session and got a lot accomplished. But if you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by the Associate Pastor of Trinity Presbyterian Church, Pastor Chris Peters.
Thank you. And let us pray. Merciful God, we thank you for the beauty of your creation and especially the beauty of our setting here in Fairhope. And we are grateful for the opportunity to dream and discuss the work and the future of this place we call home. Guide the work of Fairhope's leadership and employees that they may work for the flourishing of all of our neighbors and that they may find a path to decisions in a culture that seems invested in deepening divisions. For we trust in your reconciling guidance to help us move forward together as neighbors. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Peters. Couple of items, council, if we want to amend the agenda, we had talked about in the work session, adding a resolution to use the MPO transit allocation money to make improvements at the parking deck, including the construction of a transit shelter. So if, and I've got one other, we might can do this in one motion. If you want to amend the agenda to add this to tonight's agenda, we'll need a motion. Also, we have just a very slight overrun on our, some of our transformers, which is going to result in a cost, we believe, of about $2,190, but just to be on the safe side, if we can appropriate an additional $4,500 to cover any unforeseen costs, we can go ahead and get those transformers ordered. So I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those two items to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add two resolutions. One concerning the MPO transit allocation funds and the second, a resolution to approve additional spending that might be needed for used single-phase substation transformers. Motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, those will be items, the transformers will be item 25 and the MPO will be item 26. And I also want to say that at the request of staff, we have, I have removed item 16 from the agenda, which was the purchase of the Derek truck for the electric department. They asked that we remove that item tonight. You have the minutes in front of you from the June 22 special call meeting, the June 26 regular city council meeting work session and the agenda meetings which were held. Anybody have any changes, additions or deletions to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Councilman Burrell. This is kind of a long update because I wanted to also give the department heads, they're working on some good things, and I wanted to highlight some of those things. But first, we did receive Deborah Smith's notice of resignation last week as the city treasurer, and I want to thank Deborah for her service to the city and wish her well on her next endeavors. Tanner Bonner resigned his position in our IT department Friday was his last day. I appreciate the work Tanner has done for the city and completely understand his taking advantage of an opportunity that is more lucrative for him and his family. And on behalf of all of us, I want to wish him well at Oa. I also want to thank Public Works, this is a big, big thank you, for their work in setting up for our spectators' July 4 celebration, our city police for their crowd control, and the fire department that worked until 2:00 in the morning for the remarkable fireworks displayed last Tuesday. I've heard nothing but rave reviews, and I just think this, we want to clap before I get to the next thing. A huge thank you. I know I said this on Facebook, but I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank our public works and building maintenance departments for their exceptional response to our problems with the seawall at the pier from the rain. A special thanks to Lance Kabinas, who led a super team of city workers. Every available man was called upon to help resolve this emergency. It was truly a team effort. With uncooperative weather as well, but the seawall was repaired and the sidewalk was safe for the 4th of July, so thank you. I'm sure most of you saw the article in the paper about the woman who suffered from the flesh-eating bacteria here recently. Sherri Lee spent a great deal of time talking with the state health department and was assured that the press had been requested not to use that term because that was not the case. The health department has a press release correctly presenting the facts of this issue, and we will be publishing it on our Facebook. The health department is quite certain the woman likely became infected from the bait shrimp that pricked her hand and not from our waters. The health department does advise, however, that as a matter of general precaution, if you have an open wound or a depressed immune system, always approach all activity with care. Every other Friday, we have a supervisors meeting where they update each other on what's going on in their department. When it may seem like not much is happening, I want to assure you that there is always something moving forward that improves the way we serve our citizens. Here are some of the highlights from Friday's meeting. Our new HR hire, Leslie Green, is working on job descriptions across all departments to help improve understanding of job responsibilities and performance, which goes directly to better serve our citizens in every department. Eric Cortinez, here's a big one. In our building department, is holding a public builders meeting this week to get input and share information so the folks developing in Fairhope understand our process so no one ends up with unintended consequences and listen to their suggestions. We learned from him also that Fairhope has the largest number of certified fortified homes in the nation, 714 to be exact. I want to thank our developers for getting on board with this program. This is what happens when our, when we work together, and we don't need to build a new home to have a fortified home. If you're in need of a new roof, you can apply for this online and you'll get $10,000 towards a new roof. And, but the big savings is that after the roof is built, you will get up to 35% mandatory reduction in your homeowner's insurance. That's the real savings. So I want to thank Eric for saying, staying on top of this program and bringing it to our homeowners. Also, this week, Wayne Dias, our Director of Planning, is holding a public meeting for developers to get their input as we revise our regulations and planning ordinances. These public participations will help us accurately and fairly represent all of the stakeholders in Fairhope as we move to manage our growth and our future. After their individual meetings, Eric and Wayne will collaborate. And to better address questions about utilities, Judy and Carolyn, who answers citizens' phone calls, I'm sure if you've called the city, you've talked to one of them, have been asked to take turns handling phone calls between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, when most of the calls are coming into our city. Our goal is to be able to better direct your calls and keep you from being on hold, but it's also to not bog down the non-emergency calls that are currently being transferred to our dispatch at the police station. So I want to thank Judy and Carolyn for stepping up to do this. We are entering the 2018 budget period, and those of you who attend the work sessions prior to council meeting have noticed that our departments are individually presenting their budget needs to council. This is going to be a new system that we're implementing this year to make it easier for council to digest the departmental needs and to be able to ask questions about the details behind the requests. We anticipate a smooth budget process because of this. Our economic and community development is working on a new brat stop, which y'all did go into, so I'm not going to go into again, but I do appreciate you moving that forward because I do think it's going to make the traffic in downtown and pedestrian safety a lot better, so thank you. On behalf of the city, I want to express our deep sympathy to the Wise family and Bayside community. It is hard to conceive of the heartbreak of losing a child. Please keep the Wise family in your hearts and prayers. Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item is public participation. If you would like to come forward and speak to agenda items five through, will be 26 with the additions of the two resolutions that were added, please come forward to the mic and state your name and address for the record. I will ask that if you have something that's not on the agenda, if that would wait until the end of the meeting for the second public participation agenda item. So if you have something to bring forward on the agenda items that are listed, including the two that we added, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close public participation on agenda items and remind you that you will have another chance to speak to the council at the end of the meeting. Council comments. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, sir. Hope everybody had a great 4th of July holiday. I want to start by echoing something the mayor said and thank our public works department, our fire department, our police, and our special events coordinator for another wonderful event for the city of Fairhope. 4th of July was great. It was hot, but I think we're used to that now down here. I want to recognize, right now, we have a lot of youth baseball teams participating in state tournaments, and the couple that I know the results of so far, I want to announce them, and we'll need to get these guys in here at some point, but I'll update these next meeting so we make sure I don't leave anybody out. But in our peanut division, we sent two teams to both the rookie state tournament and then the regular state tournament. Our Fairhope rookie teams won the state tournament. Fairhope American won the state tournament, and the Fairhope National Rookie Team came in third. And then in the All-Star Division State Tournament, the Fairhope National All-Stars won the state tournament, and the Fairhope American All-Stars came in third. So that's two state tournaments in our rookie divisions, or in our peanut divisions, we should congratulate those guys. And the last thing I want to say is the red, white, and bike event that we had, the, was it the Saturday, the 4th, 4th of July? It was great. I do want to dispute one thing that I read. I read that Councilman Conyers beat me in the pie eating contest. I saw that pie, I just don't believe it. Boone beat both of us by a mile, I think, so I don't think it was really much of a competition. But anyway, it was a great event, I'm glad we got to go and check that out, and that's all I've got.
Councilman Conyers?
Yes, I actually wanted to talk for a little minute about Henry Wise. I know the mayor alluded to this earlier, but Henry was a young gentleman who recently graduated from Bayside Academy and was tragically killed in a jet ski accident over the 4th of July. My wife and I watched the celebration of his life last night that they held at Bayside Academy. I believe they had seating for around 1,000 people, it was standing room only. You know, a young man with his whole life, whole life ahead of him, and just to see the testimony of the individuals that got up and spoke, many of whom we knew, he clearly had a tremendous impact on his community. I would pray that the Wise family takes some comfort in seeing that outpouring of his friends, of his acquaintances, and just the community in general. He clearly left a huge mark on this community, and I would just say that unfortunately, his life was cut tragically short, but he clearly lived every single day and made every day count. That was my takeaway from watching last night, was that Henry Wise made every day count that he was on this earth. And I just, it kind of hit home for me and my wife, and we just said, you know, none of us are promised tomorrow. So I would say to honor Henry Wise and just to be thankful for what we have, go out and make every day count. We don't have anything guaranteed in this, in this world, so please, continued prayers for the Wise family, Henry's friends, his classmates, and the entire Bayside community and Fairhope community. That's all I have today.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you. I want to echo again what the mayor said. Thank you to all the city personnel that made 4th of July safe and another great event that makes Fairhope, Fairhope. Also want to thank Wayne and Eric for setting up the meetings this week to get the input from the professionals in the community. Really appreciate it. Thanks for your help, Sherri Lee. And other than that, just disappointed in the council's performance in the pie eating contest.
Councilman Boone?
Well, as far as the pie eating contest, I did bring in a top, or second top performance, but it's hard to swallow that crust without anything to drink, I must be honest with you. Eating is not a problem, getting it down is a real problem. But the old Dirk, he did, he did a fine job, he did whip us. But back on a more serious note, the harbor board, I mean, the construction started on the Marina, Bulkhead down at the Marina today, Friday, and they're getting, doing a good start on after rain, leave them alone, and I think we can get that fire put out here pretty quick. And the other thing is, I can't say enough about Lance and his crew putting that wall back together. I was down there looking at it when it start, when the trouble started, and the speed to which they did it and the quality of work that they did is just unmatched, I can assure you. I've been in this business for 35 years, and it was just a first-class operation. Anytime you could see the boys and Lance, just pat them on the back because that was a first-class job. And also, the fireworks crew, I can't say enough about that. I've been here all my life, and I've enjoyed it every year, and y'all just do a magnificent job every year. We really appreciate you. That's it.
Well, as usual, there's nothing glamorous left for me to say when it gets to me, so I want to thank, I want to thank the department heads for, and the mayor for prompting them to put their budgets together sooner than I've seen them, and I would say that it's my fifth year on the council, and this is the first year that I've seen the unedited budgets, and I don't think you're editing them, are you, Mayor? I mean, you're not, they're not going through an iteration before they get to us, right? And not that it would bother me if they did.
Anything you need to do more detail about the personnel so you can see it?
Right.
That's what we're having.
You know, it really is nice to see, it gives the council a better overall view of your needs, and like I said, you know, it's, we'd like to give you everything that you want every year, and I don't know if that's possible, but you know, it really does allow us to make decisions. And it also might even put in perspective what you might be doing without, so thank you all for putting that together early on, and we'll, we will keep moving through those budget presentations and hopefully get a budget passed beginning, before the beginning of the fiscal year. So with that, I'll close. Council comments. We will move to item five, which is an ordinance to protect the public's safety, health, and welfare by prescribing regulations for feeding wild ducks, geese, and other fowl within the Fairhope corporate limits. Council, you see that under tab five in its entirety. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
So moved, or introduce the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mazur? I was told that you would be the one that could speak on this. Is that correct?
I'm surprised. About all I can say is that the geese have been multiplying exponentially down on our beaches, and it's no longer just the public beach, they're moving south down wherever there's a place to land and a place to be. We've had complaints about the population, the odor, all the other unfortunate attributes of having geese around, but we also have people feeding them, which now keeps them around, but it also is not good for the geese. It's taking them off their natural habitat and vegetation. So we've put together an ordinance that we hope will help the city and help our citizens to understand that nature is best left to take care of itself in many cases.
Would you just, for the sake of the council, and for the public for that matter, would you just hit the highlights? It basically is an ordinance to try to discourage people from feeding the geese.
Right.
Would you go over that briefly?
Well, it's basically, we do have some people who love to feed the geese and think it's a one, and the ducks down there as well, any fowl. But basically, it sounds like a wonderful thing to do, it seems it's very humane, but it isn't because it's taking them away from their ability to take care of themselves and defend for themselves, which as natural creatures, they must learn to do. And it keeps them around.
Okay. Any questions for Lynn?
I guess on the follow-up, have we got any kind of idea of anything to humanely encourage the geese to go elsewhere? I mean, I've had lots of complaints about this.
We have basically two options that we can use. One that we've looked into, and this is the amber strobe light that shoots out 360 degrees all day, all night. It shoots out an amber light at goose eye level, and we've been looking into that. It needs to be where they sleep, however, because the objective is to disrupt their sleeping habit, to make them feel unsafe. And then they will move on. What we're doing is making them somebody else's problem. But now I'm understanding they're not necessarily spending the night down at the beach, so we have to find out where they're going, and that's where we need to put the light. The other issue is a herding dog. And after a period of time, what you're trying to do is to make them feel insecure and unsafe in their environment, so they will find some else, some other place to be. So we can always find somebody with a herding dog who wants to take the dog for a walk down where the geese are. Those are your two most humane options.
Right. I mean, these geese, we've got geese that stay out all night and party, and we can't figure out where they are.
We find out where they go.
They're very, actually, Jay, they're very quiet at night. They're partying during the day, and I got to tell you, you know, walking, I go down to the pier every day at lunch, and I take my daily exercise walking around there, and it becomes an obstacle course getting around that goose poop down there, which is a health issue. And I have to tell you the story, when Lance was laying the cement, when we finally got the coloring in, and they're laying the cement, and it's all nice and smooth, he turns around and looks, and there's six geese following him down the what cement. So they're, they're a pain. Yeah.
What was, what was your quote? Humane, encourage them to leave? I think that's a good.
Yeah, you got two methods.
I talked to somebody today that could help in the security of these geese, so if they are a nuisance.
No doubt.
They are. I think we need to take some action, and at least, I mean, herding dogs, I mean, if that's.
But that's just going to make it somebody else's problem, like Lynn said. I mean, that's just going to chase them down the beach to somebody else's.
And let them get a dog and a light. You know, I look at it this way, our responsibility is our city beach and our citizens, and that's what we need to take care of.
You know, five, 10 geese are not a problem.
That's right.
100, 200 geese are a problem.
And we're there.
Right.
They own the beach. I actually was down there the other day, and I saw one of our citizens, a gentleman who walked down the beach, and he had a scooper, and all he's doing is scooping further down the beach.
And Jack, to your point, you know, about, talking about the stormwater runoff, you know, if it's, has an avian background to it, and it's during the time the geese are here, I mean, we, we want to tell people not to swim when, after it rains because the geese crap's been washed into the bay, we want to get rid of the geese. I mean, come on.
Yeah. That's the health issue.
You have a different proposal?
Just give me the go-ahead. I've got a friend of a friend.
I know a couple of those, too.
I was going to mention, I guess that since they are wild, they do fall under conservation department rules, and whatever we do, we may need to check with them because there is a rule out there as far as harassment of wildlife.
We're not harassing them. They're harassing them.
Herdy dogs, you know, I'm just saying, I'd love to figure out anyway.
I know several cities in Alabama have done this.
I don't want to get in trouble with anybody, with the government hollering at us that we're, you know, not doing, following the rules of the law because there is.
Now, we did some research in advance, and there are several cities in Alabama that have had the problem and have treated it this way. Both stopping people from feeding and using the strobe light.
All right, council, we can lay this over as we customarily do on an ordinance for the next meeting, or you can decide to take action tonight by suspending with the rules if you would like. What's your pleasure? Let it lay over?
Why would we let this one lay over? I mean, I know, what's the issue with pushing through on this one?
You may not be comfortable with the fine, waiting for Robert to contact a friend of a friend, I mean, there could be multiple reasons, I don't know.
I'm okay with suspending one of the rules.
Is that a motion to suspend with the rules?
That is a motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to suspend with the rules. Vote on this immediately. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the vote to suspend with the rules. Clerk, if you'll call it the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Somebody want to entertain a motion for final adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final thoughts? Hearing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry, clerk, call the question.
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Item number six on the agenda is a resolution the city council approves the selection of the International Code Council to perform on-call professional consulting services for construction plan review for the building department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to establish a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit of $40,000. Mr. Cortez?
Mayor, council, thank you. This is a follow-up. If you remember, a couple months ago, we received a very large commercial project with the First Baptist Church plans that came in. By setting this up where we have a not-to-exceed account, as soon as I receive those plans, I can turn around and submit them to the International Code Council. The way it was previously, I'd have to bring each individual project before the council, and we had about a three-week delay from the time I received the plans to the time we got on the agenda and received council approval to send them. Doing this allows us to have, you know, basically, an open contract with a not-to-exceed, and I can send them immediately when they come in. Some of the things, we've got a lot of commercial projects going on now, and some ones that we know we're going to receive within the next 90 days. I'm going to get a, probably a 200-page set of plans from the Grand Hotel because they're getting ready to completely renovate the entire conference center, and they're also going to do the spa building. The Portico development of Mr. Haley there on Fairhope Avenue across from the hardware store. We still have a large medical office building that's right there on the corner of Twin Beach and Greeno by Fairhope, or by Fairhope High School, that's going to come in on that location. We have two downtown projects we know are coming, and the Three Circles Church, I had a meeting with their architects a couple months back, and they're going to build a 1,200-seat sanctuary and do a significant renovation in their existing building. These large commercial projects slow down our department because we can kind of work on them an hour at a time, you know, once, twice a week, you know, a few times a week. Right now, we're averaging a little over 40 inspections a day, so we do reviews when we get done with our inspections. This will allow for a quicker review, a very thorough review, because the International Code Council writes the building code. They also, there's no conflict because they will never submit projects to us as a, as an individual contractor, so it's a complete third-party review, and this allows me to do that with a quicker process.
And these fees are also recouped from the remaining process?
That is correct, yes. Our ordinance, based on the building value, we charge a $2.50 per thousand of value plan review fee. So we collect those fees, and this would come out of that fee. For example, the First Baptist Church project, based on the value of that project, their plan review fee was $13,600 per our ordinance. The review costs $9,000, so we actually came out ahead on that. You will see me next council meeting with the revision in the ordinance to put a caveat in our plan review fee that if we send them out for third-party review, the plan review charged to the applicant will either be the cost of the review or our standard fee, whichever is greater. That way, we don't wind up with a project that cost us more to review than we collect in fees.
And I would argue that all of that money is not just profit. And I would argue that all of that money is not just profit to the bottom line of the City of Fairhope. I mean, our staff does have to do something to get this information to the International Council. And also, when it comes back, they have to read it and understand it.
Well, and then we're collecting the information, like First Baptist Church, their review is done, we're collecting the information from the architects, and we're getting ready to resubmit for our follow-up from the ICC. So yes, we process all this and we interact on behalf of the applicant with the Code Council.
You get like a detailed report from there?
Oh, yes, sir. It was very detailed.
Okay. Any questions for Eric? Okay. Somebody like to entertain a motion to approve this selection?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the selection of the International Code Council. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, Eric. Item seven is a resolution, the City Council approves the selection of steward engineering to perform on-call professional engineering services for the Electric Department and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to establish a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit of $20,000. Joe or Richard, could you please explain this? And I apologize for you having to do all that. This one's a, this was a new one.
That's similar to what Eric described with the Code Council reviewing plans, although every once in a while, like the Cancer Center being built on the side of the courthouse, they had some specialized equipment that we wanted to make sure that size in the transformer for that was appropriate. As we've gone through the oil analysis of the substation transformers and having those results reviewed by the consultant, those are the kind of things that this would allow, and it would allow us to be able to do that without having to get requests for qualifications and go through the whole professional service, you know, bid process, not even, it's not a bid, but it's a review of qualifications.
How often do we have to put that out to engineers to perform these services in the past? I mean, is this something that we've performed in the house sometimes or?
Actually, and Dan can probably speak to this better than I can, but most every project we do will get qualifications from consultants that want to work with us on that specific project. And then we'll go through a grading system and we'll grade the responses and then recommend the higher-graded consultant to the mayor to, or I think we then come back to y'all to approval to, like we're doing with this one, approve, give the mayor an opportunity to negotiate with that consultant for a price with a not-to-exceed value, which you'll see that on the next item, actually.
I guess the reason I even ask the questions, I just don't, and it could be, I just don't remember it, us having to hire professional services to support the Electric Department. And maybe it's been under a different guise.
Well, they did the, they updated the model, you know, then recently completed that. And Joe asked them to look at the transformer for the Cancer Center that's being built on the other side of Greeno Road. And we've asked them to look at some transformer oil results that we were looking at, you know, as part of the upgrade to the substations, too. And we may not need them for anything, but if we do need them, oftentimes it's in a position where we want to react pretty quick, and this just gives us the opportunity to do that.
Question? Okay, council, entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the selection of steward engineering. Final discussions? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, selection is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, guys. Item eight is a resolution, the City Council approves the selection of Volker to perform professional engineering services for Rock Creek stabilization for the Public Works Department and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to establish a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm.
And if y'all are familiar with the Rock Creek Bridge and Rock Creek Parkway, it's pretty much a major access into the Rock Creek subdivision. And the last rain events we've had that were pretty significant, there's been some significant erosion, particularly along where the Gravity Sewer Line is laid on the south side of the bridge. But on the north side of the bridge, there's some trees that are falling, and there's an eddy that's being developed that's cutting into the approach from the east to the west on the north side of the road. That, the last bridge inspection we did, they recommended some significant erosion control issues out there. And so we're looking at trying to get a more comprehensive watershed analysis in this project so we can kind of understand what the 50-year and 100-year flood elevations would be, and then we're gonna try to control the capacity of that channel that's going under the bridge and just upstream and just downstream so that the erosion issues won't affect anything that has to do with the approach to the bridge or the utilities that are installed beside it.
I just have one question for you. I noticed that there were two bidders that the, I'm sorry, two persons that were considered to be selected that scored the exact same score, even to the 1/100 of a point.
It surprised me as well.
Any reason why one was chosen over the other?
Well, not really, although in the, the three evaluators, the one that we chose was the highest ranking of two of those evaluators, and the one that we did not choose was the highest ranking of one evaluator.
I got you.
So we thought that was an appropriate way to look at it.
I got you, yeah, two ones.
But it was a pretty amazing coincidence.
It was. Questions for Mr. Peterson, council? Okay, just remember, we'll have another opportunity once we get the cost back to look at this again. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection of Volker?
So moved.
Second.
Two motions and two seconds, that's a first. All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine is a resolution, Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Jason Thomason Incorporated to perform professional consulting services for graphic design and layout with a not-to-exceed amount of $31,000. Who's gonna speak to this item?
All this is, is the continuation of what Jason has been doing as graphic designer, Fran as our writer, and was this non-printing, well, non-printing will continue to do it. This will be our monthly calendars. It'll be a four-page newsletter that will be put out monthly. It's for the presentation booklet that will talk about strategic priorities and just any printed thing that the city does. That's what he's done in the past.
If I may ask, what is the, I see the 40, it says, design and layout of 40 booklet, it says 40 booklet, I don't know if that's supposed to be 40 booklets or 40 times, 40 issues with photographs and illustrations of Fairhope, past, present, and future. That's $10,000 of it. What, if I may ask, what exactly is the, what's the purpose of that?
I'm just trying to find it here. I'm not looking at the detail.
You have it, Shirley?
Yeah, oh, you might need to answer some stuff, too, though. So I think that says, that might say 40 pages?
It just says design and layout of 40 booklet.
Yeah, I don't know why it says that.
Photographs and illustrations of Fairhope.
I think it, I think that it's supposed to be 40 pages, which the booklet is actually not gonna be 40 pages. I think Jason's estimating, Mayor, was it 300 to 400 words?
Right. It'll have pictures in it, too.
And photos, but definitely not 40 pages.
So this is something that we're, are we giving them out? What are we gonna?
Yes, they're being handed out to the community at the next town hall meeting.
But the total amount is for an annual, for a monthly calendar and.
It's, it's the new iteration of City Sketches is the other portion of this.
We eliminated the expense of City Sketches because we weren't gonna have printed materials, and now we have a $31,000 expense for printed materials. I'm not totally opposed to it, but it is.
We eliminated it, but you said, I hope we have a printed version, and I said we would. We're not mailing it out to each citizen. This is gonna be distributed, hopefully by somebody that already distributes something everywhere, and I'm talking to the gal that does Eat Beat, among other publications, but that's how we're gonna be distributing, and it's gonna be monthly, so it's more timely and highlighting the things that are going on that month. But it was just to fill that need that some people do want a printed piece. And when we canceled it, you'd mentioned, we do want it, but it's one of those things that it's taken us six months now to get a graphic designer and writer for various reasons, so we're still waiting.
And Jason did, Jason and Fran have, they will be continuing what they did before, it's just the format will be a little different. And it'll be a calendar, you know, getting feedback from the community. They want something they can look at, see the events, and not everyone goes online. So a lot of our citizens don't go online, so we're trying to serve everybody as best we can.
I had a, one phone call from a concerned citizen today, and I think it's a fair question to ask, and they asked if we were going to try to rebrand the city. So does this graphic design work, include maybe a rebranding of the city, or is it strictly what's stated in here?
I think it's strictly what's stated in there.
It is strictly what's stated in there.
Yeah, the rebranding, I think is, that's gonna be some sort of internal and external community process that we'll do down the line, but it's not replacing the city seal again. I'd like to repeat that. We will keep the city seal, but there may be some slight changes in the look and feel of things. And that's not my expertise, but that's, you know, I've seen that process work many times before, just to freshen things up a bit.
I guess the last, I'm sorry to ask any questions about $31,000, but I just wasn't real familiar with this. The last question I have is that was this a, and I know we're only talking $31,000, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a whole lot, but is this a budgeted expense? I don't see a green sheet or anything. Deborah, can you answer that question?
Where is, but we still have money left in community development.
It's always been paid.
For City Sketches. So it's.
And there's lots of funds left in there. Yeah. Because we're not, we haven't been using it.
We did actually, I went through the budget with Jill, and there are funds left for what would have been City Sketches in the budget that's approved, so I'm not quite sure how that works to use those for this, but different name.
But City Sketches always.
Right. So there's money in the budget, in my department's budget to cover it.
Yeah, I don't remember passing the most recent budget with money in there for City Sketches. Just, does anybody recall?
I don't remember.
We were just saying that City Sketches has always been paid out of.
Mm-hmm.
Community development.
Oh, but wait a minute, you know, we did pass that prior to the budget. We passed the community development budget several weeks.
Right.
Maybe, maybe a couple of months prior. Okay. Any questions for the mayor or for Shirley, council?
Does it, this doesn't have to be bided, this amount?
Before, we tried to do a graphic designer and a writer, and we got them, and then it was hung up in the process that we had to make them have $1.2 million in liability insurance, which killed the deal with them, so we had to start the process over again. And I basically said, let's just use who we've always used. And although that is a little bit more pricey, I wanted to try to give small entrepreneurs opportunity, we went ahead and just used who we've always used. So that's, we've always used Fran for writing, we've always used Jason Thomas for graphic design.
Okay. Dan's gonna answer the.
Mr. James Young, an answer for that question?
Yes, this is a professional services, professional services are not bid. You are going to select a professional service like you did the engineer on merit and select them, and then we negotiate the fee. We're going for a fee for a year, so that's gonna be a not-to-exceed. He has a fee schedule to draw from that. We will open after you select it.
Okay.
And that's, that's normal. I mean, you're correct. If this were a widget we had to acquire for that kind of money, we would have to bid it out. But it's a professional service, and it doesn't work that way.
So that brings up a question that I have, is that if we, if this is for the design and layout, what would be the, what are the printing expenses going to be?
The printing, if it meets bid criteria, will have to be bid out. If it does not exceed the bid limit and the other criteria you all established, then it will not be bid out. If it is a minimal expense, it will be procured by purchase order. If it exceeds the bid limit, yes, it will be bid out.
So this doesn't include printing costs?
It does not include the printing costs. This is the design, graphic design, professional services.
That doesn't mean that we use the whole.
Right. And that doesn't mean it's going to be that, that number. That's a not-to-exceed number.
Okay. Any questions? More questions?
The presentation booklet, is that a, explain what that is, or is that like done one time annually, or this is one time forever?
I'll let the mayor speak to it, it's her project.
I've been trying to get from y'all since October for contribution. We've met individually to go over these things. So it's, probably will have a shelf life of four years.
Good.
It's similar to, I mean, it's not gonna be like Gulf Shores is 2020, but it will be similar to that as far as strategic priorities for the city, which is, you know, protecting the way we grow and so forth. Again, this is, we've been trying to do this, I've rescheduled it three times, and because of the procurement process, I might be having to reschedule it for a fourth time.
Any further questions? I will entertain a motion to authorize the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to execute the contract. Any final discussion or questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number 10 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase one John Deere Zero-Turn mower for the Golf Department from Deere and Company, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the Alabama State Purchasing Contract. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $6,479.25. Counsel, I will let you know that it is a budgeted item, and it's within, it's within $800 of budget. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to purchase the Zero-Turn mower. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, council. Item 11 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a car and body camera system for the Fairhope Police Department from WatchGuard Video. The system is available for procurement without formal bidding, provided by the Code of Alabama. The total cost is $124,755, and that is $8,245 under budget. Anybody need a quick overview on this? Is this a budget process, maybe? Somebody entertain a motion to make this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that is approved. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase two vehicles of one-half-ton 2018 Ford F-150 regular cab, four-by-two pickup, for the Public Works Department and the Streets Department there from Stivers Ford Lincoln. The vehicles are available for direct procurement through the Alabama State Contract, therefore do not have to be let out for bid. Total cost is $44,000. Total cost is $44,206.
$10,800 under.
I thought we were going to get bad news this meeting. We're still getting good news.
Stand by.
Okay. Is it coming? Am I going to be blindsided? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to purchase 26 driver's license readers for the police department from Fleet Safety Equipment. The readers are available for purchase as quotes were obtained. The total cost is $12,977.
$10,000 under.
I have one question. Do we have that many cars? How does that work, chief?
Yes, sir. We do. We, we have that many cars.
Okay. All right. It's a budgeted item under budget right now, counsel. I'll entertain a motion to purchase these.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution to City of Fairhope votes to purchase one vehicle, a Ford Explorer SUV, for the Planning Department from Long Lewis Ford. The vehicle is available for direct procurement through the Alabama State Contract. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $25,503.50.
$500 over.
$500 over budget. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item 15 is, set the City of Fairhope vote to purchase the Code Red Emergency Notification System Service from the Federal GSA Contract. Schedule 70 for the City of Fairhope for direct procurement through the Federal GSA Buying Group Contract, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through the Federal GSA Bid Process. The cost for the fiscal year is $30,445 and $17,445 in annual cost for each year thereafter. This is not a budgeted item?
No, sir. I was asked to research alert systems for the City of Fairhope. We looked at a couple of different companies, and we came up with Code Red after I got with Jeff, and we sat down, and we had conference calls with these companies. And Code Red had a caveat that they have a database that covers about, excuse me, about 80% of our population. So 80% of our population will not have to sign up for the app. The rest that it doesn't cover will have to sign up for the app. The system does multiple things. You can isolate an area, say for instance, we had a hazmat incident, a propane gas truck that was leaking in a neighborhood somewhere. We can isolate that area and sound an alert immediately that tells them to vacate their houses. I think most of y'all know propane is very dangerous. It's heavier than air, can go in their house and cause explosions when it gets hot water heater. So we'd want to send an alert real quick. We will be able to do that. We'll be able to send out alerts to people, isolated areas for boiling water after hurricanes. We can send out notices to neighborhoods when the electricity is out. We can send out notices to our employees after hurricanes when we want them to come back to work. So it does a tremendous amount of things. At the same time, it'll send out alerts for hurricane, I mean tornadoes and severe thunderstorms and all that good stuff. So it does, it does a tremendous amount, so it's not just an emergency alert system.
I'd also like to mention that we can use this for non-emergency things as well, which is even the bigger issue. This, we can, right now, if a development is happening, we normally have the developer send out like a 300-foot radius, and we mail it. This can be done quickly. We can send out reminders. We can still charge the same amount to the developer that they would be charged to mail out something to these addresses, and we can go out even further. So we could definitely use it for new development and planning, and then just general communication with what's going on around town.
Road closures, any communication to the employees if they're on the calling list. We can send out any communications we want to anyone in the City of Fairhope, any neighborhood at any given time.
Any questions, counsel? I guess, the only thing that bothers me about this is that, you know, we ask for updates, we ask for supervisor reports, and never heard of it. $30,000, just wham. Guys, we need $30,000. We didn't need it last week, but we need it this week.
We have been, we've been researching it for a while, and just finally came to a number. Just completed the project about a month ago. And I apologize, I didn't even think of bringing it up.
I don't, yeah, I mean, I mean, a note in our box would be nice. Something that gives us a heads up as to what it is would be nice. I mean, when does the spending stop? Anyway, that's just my personal opinion. All right, anybody have any more questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to purchase this notification system.
So moved.
Second.
We're motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Okay, resolution passes.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 16 was removed from the agenda. Item 17 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2018 Freightliner M2-106 chassis and loader body for the Public Works Department, just to be in the sanitation department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group Contract, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process for a total cost of $148,625.4.
$9,600 under.
$9,600 under. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the, oh, sorry. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, I entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We're motion and a second. Purchase the Freightliner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item 18 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to purchase one each automatic transfer switch for the Fire Department from Thompson Tractor Company. The item is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group Contract, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process with a total cost of $9,325.
$3,600 over.
That, that switch was budgeted last year, but what happened is, over time, it's went up since the budget process. And it was also budgeted that we were going to, we were going to try to get a brand-new generator, and we budgeted a switch for a brand-new generator. When we decided to save the city money and retrofit it with, with an actual switch on the generator that we have, that's why it's so much more. The reason this switch is so important is because our radio communication system relies on all the, all the towers throughout the county. And so if our radio system was go out in the middle of the night with a power outage, and we were not there to turn it back on, it could actually, it could actually interrupt communications anywhere throughout the county, and up to and including, worst-case scenario, a sheriff out there yelling for help, and because our tower is down because of a power outage, his communications may not go out. So it's really important that we get this switch.
What size is the generator that has a switch that costs $9,000?
Tim, go on. It's a big generator.
Anybody familiar?
It runs a whole fire station.
Okay. So 25 KW, 35 KW?
Probably around, I just don't know for sure. That's not my, my thing, I guess I would say. But it works very well.
I guess the reason I ask is because, you know, generators, you can buy a lot of generator for $10,000.
Yeah, the problem is, is that because we're, it's a big generator, runs a whole station, and we have tremendous amount of equipment. We're running cascade systems, you know, refrigeration, air conditioning, just runs all kinds of stuff. So it's a big generator, and if we were to replace a generator, it would be, it'd be like $40,000 for the generator, to replace the generator. So just to put the switch on because of retrofitting it makes it a little more expensive.
It's a 400 amp three-phase service.
400 amp?
It says 63 KW here under the generator info.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the switch.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to purchase the switch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay.
Thank you.
Get a switch. Thank you. Item 19 is a resolution to City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune water meters and Neptune water meter heads for the Water Department to be purchased as needed from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company as a sole source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group. The units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from the formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama. The estimated number of units is 220 meters at $175 per unit and a not-to-exceed annual cost of $38,500, and 90 meter heads at $175 per unit at a not-to-exceed annual cost of $15,750. Total estimated annual cost is $54,250. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase of these meters and meterheads.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, meters are purchased. Thank you. Item 20 is a resolution to award an RFQ for hydrofluoric acid or fluoride for the Water Department to Water and Waste Specialties with a bid proposal of $330 per 55-gallon drum. Questions for Dan on that? Dan or Dan?
How much do we wind up buying per year typically?
It's about $10,000 a gallon a year, 2014.
Okay. Dan, the, there's another bid. Am I reading this wrong? $203.
If you.
Okay, why did we choose the 330 over the 203?
Look again, there's an asterisk.
It's real fine print.
Right, there's an asterisk by the 20340. Look down below the chart, it says extended price incorrect, calculated from unit price is $2,003.65. They made a, an error in their unit price.
Oh, so I should say 55 times 38 there?
Their, their unit price is an error.
Yeah.
And.
I see. If I looked at the price per, yeah, I see that. Price per gallon, 36 versus.
The extension is incorrect, and.
I see that, I'm sorry.
We have to go, state law says that unit price prevails if there's an error.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Dan? I guess, may not be the best time to bring it up, but there are certain people that don't want fluoride in our water. You may have seen these emails, or you may have had discussions about this, and we've had doctors and experts come before us before and say that it's the greatest health advantage of the 20th century, but I just throw that out there, in case anybody has a different thought.
Do you mind if I address that just for a minute?
Absolutely, go ahead.
I appreciate you bringing it up, and there are.
I mean, it just needed aired out.
There's no doubt. We have a couple of customers who email different issues regarding fluoride. And what I, what I'm going to try to do is try to get expertise on both sides of the, of the issue. I'm going to try to get somebody from the CDC and somebody from the Coalition to eliminate fluoride. I'm going to try to hold it on a county-wide basis. There's a group that, that we formed back, I don't know, five or six years ago, the Baldwin County Water Distributors Association. And what I'd like to do is get that group to host a meeting so that we can have a public forum with a panel discussion, and maybe just evaluate whether the same need that was there in the 60s when fluoride was first introduced to water is still as necessary today with the different fluoridated products for oral hygiene. And just, and I'm not a health expert, and I don't know the pros and cons to all of it, but, but I think it's worth the evaluation from the perspective of, is it still as necessary today as it was when it was first introduced? And that, so we're working on that.
Excellent, that's a good idea.
And I think that it'll give all the utilities, and some of them I don't think feed fluoride now anyway, but, but it'll give everybody an opportunity to, to express the pros and cons to it, and then we might be able to make a, you know, a more educated decision on whether we want to continue to feed it or not. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Well, we're not buying a year's supply at one time anyway, do we? Dan?
We buy it as needed basis.
As needed basis anyway. Okay. Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to award this?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to award the bid. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, award is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item 21 is a resolution that the budget for the FY 2016, 2017 is hereby amended by adding a meter reader in the meter department and removing the revenue enforcement officer. Both positions are a grade 19. Who's going to speak to that? Mayor, you want to speak to that, or?
I didn't put this on here. Do you know who did it?
Who added this?
Jason Jarvis.
Jason is here? Not sure.
Jason requested.
Jason's here.
Is Jason here? No, I don't think he's here.
Okay, Jill, you want to speak to it?
Yes, Jason Jarvis spoke with me about this, and this is something that he would have probably put on here, but currently, he is not in need of the revenue enforcement officer. In fact, that person who retired was, was making more than what we would be bringing a meter reader in at. He just has a, a big need for a meter reader right now instead of the revenue enforcement officer.
Mayor, how do you feel about that?
I think that's fine. I mean, it's, it's less, and do we have the revenue enforcement officer, though? Or do you have any idea?
I don't think anybody is currently holding that position right now.
I think just because he needs this right away, and it's at a lower grade, let's definitely put that through, and then look at for 2018 budget when he presents to see if there's a need for the revenue.
We talked earlier about the, doing that through the police department and their budget, rather than having duplicate positions for that.
Right. Well, this is a different, this is in revenue.
Revenue, code enforcement.
Yeah, that would have been, actually, she's in building.
Yes. I stand corrected.
And she came over and talked to me about it, about it, and I asked her for the position just like I did to hold it, but nobody can give up their position that they first. They won't give it to me, but they'll give me the work. And so, I don't want to do more work.
Because it also says in the resolution, it mentions it should be part of the police department, so.
Well, the, the revenue enforcement, but not, not the.
The meter reader would be in Jason's department.
Yes, definitely.
Correct. And I think if that's what he needs right now, it is a lower grade. I hate that he's not here to say something about the revenue enforcement officer, but that might be something that could be combined. I don't know. So.
I know there was discussion in the revenue department regarding all these enforcement titles maybe being moved to, chief, was it your department?
Yeah, we, we have talked. That's what I'm saying. She came over and told me, but that's the problem. Everybody wants to, I use the word, and my people don't like it, dump it on the police department. And so, I think I had really looked at the revenue officer, and when we were talking with Jennifer, and she was explaining to John and I, we said, "Yeah, we convert these two places together." And so we got to the point where I'm, "Are you going to give me this position? Can we go forward, counsel, and get, oh, and I need my meter reader position?" And so, I mean, it, we do what we have to do.
Since he needs somebody right away. Since he needs somebody right away, because I'm, uh, who retired, I mean, this was a while back.
Dwayne Logan.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Man, we can always go back and look at this revenue, just the language that takes it out of the Police Department, and I, I'm telling you, I really, for some reason, think we had that in the, in the budget. The meter reader? No. For the Revenue, uh, for the, for the Enforcement Officer. I'm gonna check that budget tonight when I get home.
I, I think he did, he's saying that he wants this, he wants this removed, and the meter reader added.
The Revenue Enforcement Agent was in there for seventeen, but he's needing a meter reader instead of that.
I got that, I got it.
Right, okay.
Saying to remove it from, and it says, if you read the resolution, that says, and I'm not saying you haven't, it says the Revenue Enforcement Officer position should be a part of the Police Department and pay, oppose certified, and...
Oh, wow, I don't know about all that.
So, if there was something that was budgeted for the Police Department, it's, I don't want to inadvertently remove a position that we budgeted for the Police Department, necessarily.
That's a different discussion, that the Revenue Department needs to be here for, I'm just trying to answer Jason's, uh, need for a, an immediate meter reader right now.
I just don't want to have unintended consequences of defunding a position that we passed in the budget.
Right.
That's what I'm worried about, and I, and this might do it, but I guess we could turn right around and put it back in, if it, if it did.
Yeah, I mean...
I, I think that we have, but I could be wrong.
We could do it in two weeks.
Okay. All right, well, we will, I'll entertain a motion to pass the res- resolution as written.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, Jill, thanks, counsel. Item twenty-two is a resolution that the City Council will request the Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization to fund the project, to hire a consultant, to complete a traffic diversion and calming, waste finding, signage, and parking study, and commence to provide the required local match of six thousand dollars, and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the necessary documents for this project. That's not what we added at the beginning of the meeting, but this is a, the separate thing that we discussed before. Any questions for Sherri Lee on this? Somebody want to entertain a motion?
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to commit the six thousand dollars in funds. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, resolution passes. Item twenty-three is a resolution that the Director of Golf is hereby authorized to establish the selling prices of food and beverages at the Quail Creek Snack Bar, and to establish the standard published daily green fees, cart fees, and range fees, this excludes annual members dues, and to discount green fees at his or her discretion during off-peak periods up to forty percent without council approval. Uh, counsel, I can maybe help you out with this just a little bit, I, I spoke to Lynn, and I spoke to Bobby about this, and, um, so, when it comes down to the annual dues, this still leaves the counsel on the hook to do that. Uh, when it comes to off-peak periods, uh, we had asked Bobby what he, you know, what he typically gives, and then, and it ranged on these green fees up to, I think, thirty-seven and a half percent, so rather than putting thirty-seven and a half percent in the resolution, we technically waited, give up to forty percent, uh, without, um, council approval. Uh, and therefore, you can't, um, you know, if he had a group, and it doesn't, you gotta write things for the next ten or twenty years, it may not be Bobby, and it may not be us here, and it may not be Lynn in office, and it may not be Mayor Wilson, but you don't want to leave it, um, such that it could be abused, and they have their favorite pet charity that wants the golf course for free, I don't think you want to make it such that they can give it away for free, uh, whenever they want, uh, but we do that for a few organizations right now, ourself, as a council. So that's kind of the lowdown on it, I think it, it turned out to be a pretty good resolution. Does anybody have any questions for me? Bobby, are you out there? No, okay. Lynn, did I leave anything out, did you want to add anything to that? Okay.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Resolution.
Okay, motion in a second, any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, resolution passes. Item twenty-four, Street and Traffic Control Committee recommendations, request the City Council authorized to place two-speed calming devices with the correct miles per hour for Grand Avenue to help with traffic. Chief?
We had the meeting, and it was just three of us on the board in attendance, we had a quorum, uh, Arthur, Wayne, and myself, and they came before us, they had came before the board once before, uh, requesting these common devices, um, and the gentleman said it was a couple of years ago, but anyway, we looked at the signage and everything that they had, uh, they had their petition in order and everything, and so we, um, voted on it, and it was unanimous to, uh, put them in. Um, the following Sunday morning, I guess, about ten o'clock, I guess, this email from Melanie Beiser that works for the city for thirty years, she informed me, and, um, she wanted a discount rate, and I told her I didn't have the power to discount anything, the rate was set to install the common device, I said, you can talk to Lisa, I say, and let her know if you want it on the council agenda or not, or we can go on and vote on it, and y'all can get your money together, or whatever. She emails me back the following Sunday, so Sunday's a good day, I guess, and, um, she said that they had most of the money, but they was wishing, because her dad gave some land down to the beach, and she retired from the city with thirty years in that they could get a discount. And I told her, again, to get in touch with Lisa, and let Lisa know if she wanted it on the agenda, and I would bring it before the council, and let them know that we didn't have a problem with putting them in, but we didn't, I don't have the authority to give them a discount cut.
So counsel, uh, I've been on the Streets Committee for a while, and I was not at this meeting, but, uh, when the Streets Committee makes a recommendation for speed calming devices, or speed bumps, if you will, uh, we put in the standardized speed bumps, uh, we have offered to put in the decorative stamped concrete speed bumps at our cost to, uh, homeowners associations or whomever, if they pay for our cost. Uh, and we've never, to my knowledge, given that to anybody at a discount, I think it's a real bad precedent, I'm not even sure that it's ethical saying that, uh, so, um, my recommendation would be that we offer the, um, routine speed bumps, uh, as we do to any other subdivision or street that asks for them, when it's approved, uh, or have them come up with the full price for the decorative speed bumps. But you do have the authority to, to do differently. I'm kind of surprised we make people pay for speed bumps, personally. Well, you don't pay for the standard one, but if you want the decorative ones with the stamped concrete, there's a pretty big expense there, we don't pay for those, we've never paid for those.
I think they're roughly around sixteen hundred dollars, I think.
How much?
I think, I think he said it was about sixteen hundred a piece.
Sixteen hundred?
A piece. And it, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work, I've been out, when they put them in, and what they have to do is, they work on half of the street, they can put in half of it,
Right.
and then they come back and do the other half, but it's, it's the colored dye in it, just like at the pier, and like on Church Street, that, that's, that's the ones down on the south end of Church Street that's put in.
I mean, I would think we'd want them to be uniform throughout the city, personally. Well, they're not.
Nope.
You're gonna, you're gonna go back and reimburse everybody in the city to put those decorative ones in? Something you can put in the budget.
Firefly, that's what's different from the two that we...
Yeah, that's the other thing that he's saying, too, is that they're, they're, you put that concrete in, they're permanent, we, we've actually had instances where people, one of them removed. And, uh, the decorative ones are, you know, pretty, pretty big job to remove, it's up to the council. I'm just giving you the history.
I guess I make a motion, we approve as presented from the Street and Traffic Control Committee.
Okay, I have a motion to approve as submitted from the Streets and Traffic Control Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, speed bumps are authorized. Okay, the next item is the, added to the agenda concerning the, um, this, I'll just read it to you, uh, the City Council, whereas on May the eighteenth, twenty eighteen, uh, twenty seventeen, the City Council adopted and approved a resolution to purchase for use single-phase substation transformers for the Electric Department from the Utilities Board of Silicaga at a tested and delivered price of thirty-two thousand fifty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents, and whereas after testing the transformers, one of the previously quoted transformers tested less than satisfactory, so the city had to select a heavier, uh, in weight transformer, this resulted in an additional load crane and haul cost of two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, and the need to approve with a contingency for unforeseen factors, a total of forty-five hundred dollars. Therefore, you'd be approving expenses associated with the acquisition of this transformer up to forty-five hundred dollars. Entertain a motion for this?
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, counsel. The last item, before we get to public participation again, uh, is the, uh, second item that we added, and we discussed this in the work session, concerning the Eastern Shore Metropolitan Organization Transit Allocation Funds, and so, this resolution says be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, as follows, the funds from the Eastern Shore MPO number five-three-zero-seven, transit allocation being approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars are hereby allocated to make improvements to the parking deck, including construction of a transit shelter adjacent to the Church Street entrance to the parking deck, adopted this tenth day of July, twenty seventeen, so, the key element there is, it says, uh, which includes the construction of the transit shelter, and doesn't limit us so much, because we don't know exactly what all those improvements may be made, so, um, the attorney wrote it, that, it's a little bit elastic on that, what the funds could be used for. Entertain a motion?
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the twenty percent match, uh, which, I think we've already approved the twenty percent match, that would allow this to be made at the, um, parking deck. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Next items, public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council? There's another resolution back there for the, uh, storm debris? No, we're gonna, we, we're gonna postpone it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't, we didn't add that, and, uh, so, question was about the debris removal contract, which does expire tonight, uh, we, uh, we will call an emergency session if we find a need in the next two weeks to, to do that, but I didn't want to walk a one point eight million dollar expense onto the agenda tonight. I don't know if it changes the outcome, but anything looked too good. All right, public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'd like to ask a question, nobody, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I got something. Francis Rip, Rip Report, two-two-nine-eight-five, High Ridge Road. Oh, the Rip Report has a comment section that has really lit up lately, and, um, one of the primary people that's on there is Jester six-six-six. Mr. Brown's being accused of being that person on six, as Jester six-six-six, are you?
Francis Rip, you're giving yourself way too much credit.
No.
Okay, fine, you stand on that, that's fine, I'd like to address your letter, though.
In your letter, you mentioned the disruptive actions of the mayor, first you mentioned Sherri Lee being hired as, uh, Economic Development, that's, you know, the mayor's decision. Heather Hudson was fired, it's mayor's decision. Two employees were fired with thirty-five years' experience, I dare say they brought part of that on themselves, but that is the mayor's decision, and that's exactly what our governor is doing right now, by the way. She cleaned out the staff when she was appointed, and now she cleaned out the other half, the exact same thing. Mayor Wilson pushes to, for the city to take over the airport authority, she never was trying to take over the airport authority, she was trying to protect the citizens that had been paying and put millions in the airport authority as having a little bit of ownership on the land, which should happen. Mayor Wilson continues to attack the airport authority with claims of corruption, that's not true, she hasn't said anything in months, that's me, and I will continue to do so. She filed an ethics complaint, which she was compelled to do by ethics rules, against Mr. Jack Burrell and a board member, both ruled baseless. Gentlemen, I'm gonna tell you right now, and this is a matter of record, it is not baseless, and there is an ongoing investigation going on now, and it is not basis, baseless, if it was, it wouldn't have been filed. Mayor Wilson holds meetings with the employees about the health insurance that goes along with the library board, those were discussions on what they were gonna do. I don't see the big issue, you got discussions on all types of controversial things. Insurance has been talked about every council for the last four...
Counsel, Ron, do you want to continue to hear this? I mean, I necessarily not.
A claim filed against, uh, Mayor Wilson for assault, that's not gonna go anywhere, that's a frivolous claim, and I would hope that the council wouldn't be settling something like that without looking into it a lot further, as well as any other lawsuits brought by employees that are dismissed. And Mayor Wilson places tracking software on the targeted supervisors, that's done in different pla- different places all the time, and you usually, you notified of it in the beginning. The one thing that gets me in your letter, though, is about the soccer fields, you ran on the soccer field thing, it upset you.
Okay.
From the beginning, yeah, but I didn't run on, I didn't, hang on, Jack, let me address this guy.
All right, well, there's three minutes is up.
I didn't run on the basis that there was corruption at the soccer field, I ran because of the whole concept and the process in which it was played out was, was ill-conceived, it had nothing to do with corruption, had nothing to do with wrongdoing, backdoor dealing, good old boys, it had to do with the process of building the field, putting the fence up without having the concession stand there. So you just sit up there and insinuate that I ran on the idea of corruption is false, just like everything else you write. Okay, well, that's fine, but I'm gonna tell you, you look into that soccer field, and we didn't move, we didn't move dirt around.
Mr. Rip, I've been generous with your time, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
I got one, though.
Yes, sir.
If I may. Uh, Chief, I guess this is for you or the traffic, I got, almost got hit, uh, the other night, coming down, uh, Church Street, I believe it was Church Street, well, it's the only light in town, we got a red blinking on one side and yellow blinking on the other, is there a reason for that? Every other light in town is red, red on both sides, except for that light. And let me tell you, you don't want to go through that light cautiously.
The electric department, they done left, I don't control the light, so I'm not at fault with that.
No problem, I was just asking. On Church Street and, uh, Faroe Avenue, going in there about ten o'clock at night, it's the only light in town that's got a orange light on one side, so when you go through, the guy stopped thinking you're gonna stop, he doesn't stop.
I'll talk to Joe about it.
Okay. Anybody else, any council members? Anything else, any closing comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, we're adjourned, thank you.